Yeah, it's awesome.
All right, everyone, I'm going to ask us to move away from the door and allow us to call our Housing Authority meeting to order. We've got to, we have one more count. Before we call the meeting to order, um... No. All right, I'm going to go ahead and call to order the special meeting of the Vallejo Housing Authority. And the time is 6:49 PM. I'll ask our city clerk to please call the roll call.
Chair Source.
Present.
Vice Chair Brigensher.
Present.
Board Member Gordon.
Present.
Lettuju, I'll note, is she here or is she absent? Okay. Matthias.
Here.
Matulik.
Present.
Paul Maris.
Present.
Thank you very much. That is going to bring us to consent calendar and approval of the agenda. We have our agenda to approve and our minutes from our previous meeting. And if there are no comments, we do have a motion for approval.
I move that we approve the minutes and the agenda.
All right, can we do just a voice vote, all in favor? Or do we need to do a, oh, it's voting on our screens. Let's go ahead and vote.
Did everyone vote? I don't have everyone voting.
Do we have everybody?
Let me start this again.
Okay.
Okay. I think I'm missing someone still.
Did everybody vote?
Two not voting.
And we have Councilmember Lettuju is absent.
Okay, okay. The motion carries unanimously with Board Member Lettuju absent.
Wonderful, thank you. That's going to bring us to our action calendar and item 4A, which is adopt a resolution approving the award of a project-based voucher housing assistance payment contract with the Firm Foundation Community Housing for existing housing for the Broadway project located at 2441 Broadway Street and authorize the Executive Director to execute this housing assistance payment contract for 47 PBV units. And we have our Housing Director, Ms. Jones, and our Assistant City Manager here as their presentation on this item.
Thank you, Board, Board of Directors. Alicia Jones, Housing Director for the Community Housing Development Department. I have Gillian Hayne, our Assistant City Manager, present. Today, I present to you our recommend, our request to have an award for the project-based voucher, vouchers, to allocate vouchers to Firm Foundation. A little background on this particular item, on December, December 2nd, 2024, the Housing Authority issued an RFP for up to 200 vouchers for new construct, under the PBV program, for new construction, rehab, rehabilitation, and existing housing units. Of the 200 vouchers that were allocated, we have approximately 70 vouchers left. Of those 70 vouchers, 47 of those are, are for Broadway, for the Broadway project, leaving approximately 23 vouchers remaining unused. On the, on the, in response to the proposal, we received four, four proposals. Three proposals did not meet the requirements of the application. One was for California Supportive Housing, which did not meet the requirements of the application, as the application indicated complete funding through Home Key Plus Grant Program, which had not received any funding commitments at the time of the application. The second respondent was Enough Housing, in which the application was not, was not selected, because it did not meet two criterias, under site control nor funding. Funding was identified through Home Key, Project Home Key as well, which no funding commitments had been allocated at that time. The third, the third response was to Terra Family Homes, whose application was incomplete. The fourth and final applicant was Found Firm Foundation, who successfully met the requirements of the application. And on May 2nd, May 20th of 2025, by way of resolution, the Housing and Community Development Commission voted five to one in approval to the Board to recommend...
Excuse me, sir?
Yes.
To recommend awarding 47 vouchers to Firm Foundation for the project-based voucher program. Today, we have representatives from Firm Foundation present to provide a short presentation on the development of the project and where they are at this time, which I believe they're approximately 99, 99% complete and pending their TCO within the next couple of weeks.
Right.
Next couple of days, I stand corrected.
Thank you. I'll just ask our folks in the back, if you could move away from the doors so that they close. Thank you. There they go. All right, do we have them here to present?
Yes.
Okay.
Hi, I would like to call Heather from Firm Foundation to the podium to provide a short presentation.
And if you want to raise it, there's a, on the lower right, there's a switch that'll bring it up for you.
Hello, thank you for having me. My name is Heather Shaquoin. I work with Firm Foundation Community Housing. We are a nonprofit affordable housing developer that specializes in creating housing for people recovering from the trauma of living in homelessness. We work with public entities, private organizations, faith-based organizations, and other nonprofits to increase the supply and availability of high-quality, service-enriched, affordable housing for the community. I'm going to speed through, just since this is a shorter presentation time, so we can go ahead and move through a couple of these examples, just some past projects that we've worked on. We can, let's jump ahead. I just wanted to quickly say one thing about this past project example, six micro-units, a permanent supportive housing. One of our first projects that opened in 2019, and even though it was just six units, to date, they've had 41 people move through to other permanent housing since that time. So you do see the effectiveness of this model with seeing people move through it, even though it is permanently supportive housing. So Shelter Inc. is our operational partner on this project. One of the keys to success in, in our permanent supportive housing projects is the connections that we have with service operators who provide the wraparound services that are critically needed by individuals who are experiencing homelessness. This helps them stabilize and begin the road to recovery. Shelter Inc. is active, so they've grown out of the community, and since 1986, they've helped nearly 300,000 women, children, and men who have been helped through their approach to preventing homelessness and breaking the cycles. They own or lease 240 units, providing affordable, accessible housing to low-income families. Last year, they provided services to 5,824 individuals, including almost 2,000 children.
Next slide.
At this project, Shelter Inc. will be providing intensive case management services, benefits, eligibility services, connections to educational opportunities, employment services, and financial literacy services. Next slide, please. There's a great need. The pick count shows that there's over, there's 682 unhoused folks experiencing homelessness in Vallejo, which accounts for 40% of the county's unhoused population and 46% of the unsheltered population. At Broadway, we, we do plan on building a supportive community with elevated design. We'll move to the next slide. It's not intended to be a Band-Aid solution. It is high-quality, similar to market-rate housing, that is intended to help people heal and while also providing the tools that they need to move from survival to long-term thriving within the community. Let's move to the next slide, please. We do have an affordability agreement recorded that guarantees that these units will be used for individuals in the extremely low-income category. Our site is located, it's a .53-acre site in the North Gateway District, near some beautiful park areas, Dog Park, and near some major transit locations, grocery stores. It's a great location within the community. This, it's also a beautiful site. The next slide, please. We can keep moving forward to the next slide as we talk through the building. It's about 27,000 square feet, a four-story elevator building with community amenities, as well as several garden units and a community area, both indoor and outdoor. The ground-floor units around the garden area also help provide a variety of spaces outside of the taller building, so for folks, certain folks might thrive better in a less dense situation, and it also eases some of the density across the overall site. Every unit includes a full kitchen, bathroom, a full kitchen and full bathroom. All units are fully adaptable, with nine mobility units and five communication units, as with extra accessibility features included. But any unit in this building can be made fully accessible with just some minor modifications. Next slide, please. We utilized some innovative, factory-built construction methods, and including some units built in factory OS with some local job labor and, and local unions. Next slide, please. So we're currently hovering between 98, 99% completion. These are some photos that are already out of date, but you can see we're pretty well along, both on the exterior, even with planting going in, and interior, there's some material protections showing in this picture. I might have a couple more recent a little bit later, but, and you can see our unit interiors are complete and have passed the VHA inspections as well. Next slide, please. Just a couple photos of the front, we can keep going. A few more photos just to show some views. There's a little bit more planting and exterior and interior finishes in since these were taken, but you get a sense of the entryway experience, both for the, the main secured lobby entry to the building and to each individual unit doors. And you can see the, the finishes, the units are small, but they do have high-quality finishes and are a beautiful space to, to spend time. Next slide, please. We can get into more of the details of the schedule, but we're looking to have our final completion in June. Happy to take any further questions on schedule if those come up. In conclusion, we would, we are looking forward to welcoming folks into their new home very soon. We appreciate the support of the Vallejo community and city partners and dedicated design and build team to bring this project to completion. And we want to give special recognition to the contribution of the City of Vallejo residents through their investment in this project with Measure P funding, which was critical to the project's remobilization and completion. We look forward to this project becoming an integral part of the community and by providing a stabilizing, evidence-based pathway to get folks from the street and into long-term dignified and healing housing. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other parts of the presentation, or should we move over to?
Yes, through the chair, I just have one additional item. I wanted to identify the Housing and Community Development Commission approved the, approved the project base with provisions. There are three provisions that they would like to have put in place. One is a performance metrics to be placed by the Assistant City Manager Gillian Hayne for the project operator. Two, online updates, ongoing updates to the, by City Manager, Assistant City Manager Gillian Haynes, once the project ownership, ownership has transferred to the city, and updates to be provided every 60 days and in-person every 120 days. The third provision is for Firm Foundation to provide documentation of timely resolution of outstanding IRS and DOJ, Department of Justice required documentation.
And if I may, through the chair, really quick, just clarify a little bit. So the operator agreement will be coming to the City Council June 3rd, and it contains many of the maintenance and performance measures that the City Council will consider at that time. And so I did tell the Housing Commission that I would bring that document, once the council has given direction, back to them, so that we could ensure that those performance measures were integrated into the project. And then the IRS and DOJ documents from Firm Foundation have been updated online. They are a valid nonprofit, but there are some outstanding documents, but nothing is preventing us from moving forward on that. And then again, the Commission just really wants some updates and some follow-ups, so we'll be working with Shelter Inc., the operator, to provide those, every 60-day updates through the HMIS system reporting, and then I'll bring that via memo to the Commission. And then every 120 days, we will have an in-person presentation. So those were some requests. The Commission did vote five ayes and one abstention, and so they were very supportive of the project and it moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any public commenters on this item?
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
I will say that in, when we, we appreciate the, the information, the presentation, this is the first and most detailed update we've gotten on the details of the project. It's unfortunate that it's a 15-minute meeting, and I would say for the future, if we could do a better job estimating the, the timing, if we need more time for a Housing Authority meeting, we should, we should start sooner, because there's a lot here that we could be discussing. And I'll just keep, ask my colleagues to keep in mind that we, we, we have limited time, and so maybe we aim to keep our comments focused on the, the project-based vouchers specifically, and we can find some more time to talk about the other elements of the project. And with that, I see Councilmember Gordon.
First of all, I want to thank you so very much for this. I'm excited about it. I can't wait to, to, to see the end product. I'm glad that I've been following it through from the very beginning, my picture timeline. I do want to echo that I want, I do want to support what the recommendations were from the housing element point of view. I do agree with that 100%. And with regarding the vouchers, I think that we should move forward with it, but thank you so much for all your hard work. You should be very proud of yourself that you get to see the end product. Thank you.
Any other?
That's right, it's a team, I agree. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from council? All right, do we have a motion to approve the item, then?
Yeah, I move that we adopt a resolution approving the award of a project-based voucher housing assistance payment contract with Firm Foundation Community Housing for existing housing for the Broadway project located at 2441 Broadway Street and authorize the Executive Director to execute the housing assistance payment contract for 47 PBV units.
All right, and we have it set up to vote on our screens.
Well, Councilmember Lettuju, you're showing abstain, not voting.
Do you, do you want to state your vote?
Do you want me to redo it again? Yeah. Okay, let me redo it again.
All right, we're going to revote.
Okay. Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. So, that's going to bring us to action item 4B, which is, well, I'll ask our city clerk, would you like to announce the item? I can, I can as well, either way. Let's go ahead and have you announce it.
The doctor resolution, one, establishing a rapid rehousing program using funding from the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund. And two, amending the fiscal year 2425, Fund 126 budget allocating $100,000 to provide limited-term rental subsidy and security deposit assistance under the rapid rehousing program for individuals who are experiencing homelessness or existing or exiting homelessness.
Thank you. And do we have a presentation on this item?
Through the chair, yes. I have a short presentation.
All right, go ahead.
Next slide. So I would like to just provide a little short overview of the rapid rehousing program. What is the rapid rehousing program? The rapid rehousing program is, is an intervention informed by a housing-first approach that is, that's a critical part of the, the community effective, effective homeless crisis response system. The rapid rehousing, rapid rehousing rapidly connects families and individuals experiencing homelessness to permanent housing through a tailored package of assistance that may include use of one-time limited financial assistance for, and targeted supportive services. Targeted population for the rapid rehousing program are individuals that are currently homeless or houseless and also exit, or maybe exiting homelessness. Some of the, some of the barriers that are associated with families transitioning out of homelessness into permanent housing is financing. The financing of downpay, of downpayment for the deposit or for the old debts for utilities. So the rapid rehousing program will offer one-time funding to assist those individuals with utility payments, if they need to pay old utility bills, if they need security deposit assistance, move-in assistance, these funds will be available for those individuals. The length of the, under the, the length of assistance can be up to six months for rental assistance, and also it would allow individuals access to community resources and assist with their housing retention. Next slide, please. Through the, the Low Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, this fund has eligible activities, and the rapid rehousing is one of the eligible activities we can use the funds for, and it's intended to address homelessness and prevent it from reoccurring. The eligibility for this, these particular funds and this rapid rehousing program is typically offered without any preconditions, such as employment or income type. Next slide. The services will be, will be made, offered for rental assistance, help with move-in costs, security deposit and utility payments, as well as supportive services like job training and counseling. The Housing Authority currently partners with Resource Connect, and upon approval of this particular program, the, the Housing Authority, or the Housing Department, will expand that collaboration to Resource Connect for referrals for this particular program. Next slide. We come to you today to request allocation of $100,000 from the, the Low Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund for the rapid rehousing program to provide rental subsidies and move-in assistance for the unhoused, individuals exiting homelessness.
And if I may, through the chair, really quick and comment, we did have this program prior to my time, and because of staffing issues that went away, and this is something that's super helpful to the community, it really is a really big homeless preventer when you can actually help with some rental assistance or security deposit, or when someone's got a huge PG&E bill and they can't quite make it, and they're just right on the edge. This program is so, so important. We've been requested for a couple years now, and now, we're not fully staffed right now, but we feel that at this time, we have at least enough staffing to start this small program at $100,000 level and get things moving for some people that are really in great need. So that's why we brought this before you this evening. We have just under $1 million left in the Lima Hoff Fund, right? 909, something, 960, I think. So this would only be using $100,000 of that, and then if things go well, then we can come back to the Housing Authority Board and, and continue the program. So thank you for your consideration this evening.
All right, do we have any speakers on this item?
None at this time, Madam Mayor.
All right. Questions, comments from council? Councilmember Matthias.
I just have a quick clarifying question for my edification. So would this program cover things like, let's just say someone comes to you and says, "My tags are expired," or "I need, you know, this item to be able to get to work"? I mean, like, are you setting the criteria for the program, and can that expand based on, or is it pretty set?
Through the chair, the, the criteria for these funds is specifically for rental subsidies and assistance with utility, utility payments. There are, they're specific, so it's not a catch-all kind of fund. It's specific to assisting those that are transitioning out of homelessness or that are currently homeless and moving into a home and need assistance.
Okay, thanks.
Other questions from the board? Councilmember Matulik.
Thank you, Mayor, and as a follow-up to Councilmember Matthias, when you say utilities, would that include like internet or cable, of things of that nature?
Through the chair, so the regulation specifically says utility reimbursement, like utilities, and cable wouldn't be considered a utility, it's more of a luxury, and a needed one at this time, but it is a luxury. So I, they were talking about PG&E, water, sewer, garbage, those type of utilities.
Thank you for that clarification, because I wanted the general public to understand what the, what the definition of utilities was, so thank you.
All right, to other questions from the board. What are some of the other things that we would use that Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund for?
Through the chair, other eligible activities is for affordable housing development, purchasing, and developing affordable housing.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm seeing no other comments, so do we have a motion to approve this?
Yes, I move that we adopt a resolution, one, establishing a rapid rehousing program using funding from the Low and Moderate Income Housing Asset Fund, and two, amending the fiscal year 2024, 2025, Fund 126 budget, budget allocating $100,000 to provide limit-term rental subsidy and security deposit assistance under the rapid rehousing program for individuals who are experiencing homelessness or exiting homelessness.
All right, and we'll go ahead and vote on our screens.
Motion carries unanimously.
All right, and with that... All right, and with that. And with that, we will adjourn our Housing Authority meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Jones.
All right, we're going to be going straight into our council meeting, but we do need a minute to change over the system, as well as bring back our city manager. So give us just a couple of minutes.